...for Tuesday, January 29th, and we'll start with a couple of announcements. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, I'm sorry, tomorrow, Wednesday, there will be a, what they're calling a joint forum between the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance and the town's Economic Development Advisory Board, talking about vibrancy in commercial areas and how commercial areas and neighborhoods interact. It will be in Town Hall tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in Room 103 on the first floor. And I would also just like to make note that the opening of the warrant for the annual town meeting is Thursday, February 24th, which is the first date on which articles can be filed, and the closing of the warrant is Thursday, March 14th. Did I say February 14th? Anyway, Valentine's Day. Opening of the warrant is on Valentine's Day, February 14th, and closing on March 14th. And finally, just one other announcement, community development block grant applications will be available this Friday, January 25th, at 9:00 AM in the town's Communities and Development Department, Room 309, Brookline Town Hall.
I know there's, I don't have it with me, but there's a, I know as part of the climate activity, there's an interesting thing tomorrow night.
You're right, and I wish I had it.
With Mindy Luber, who recently received an award, and several other people. And I cannot tell you the exact title of it, but I know that it was pointed out to me by the Mary Dewart, the head of the Climate Actionists being a very-
And it would be in my Climate Action calendar if I had brought it with me, but I didn't bring it with me. But I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so there's, people should look that up. I can't remember exactly what it's called, but it's supposed to be very good.
Okay, and just a sort of a note, we haven't actually committed to dates yet, but there will be two selectmen's meetings in, dates in March that are scheduled for Tuesday, one on March 27th and one on April 3rd. Both are in conflict with Passover, and so the town, the selectmen's meetings will get rescheduled, probably to a Wednesday night, those two weeks, but we haven't set those days yet. Okay, other announcements, members of the board?
A quick announcement, I went to the grand opening ribbon cutting for our new-
Yogurt.
Frozen yogurt, which is called 16 Handles, and just welcomed them to the community, but also wanted to point out a couple of things. First, although this is a franchise operation, this is a company store, handpicked by the big cheese of the, the big yogurt of the-
The big yogurt?
Yeah, the big dairy product picked this location, first one in New England. Brookline had his, had it in his crosshairs, this is where he wanted it to be. So it's a great-
Destination for yogurt.
Great vote of confidence for the town of Brookline and for the health of our commercial areas, and a nice operation. And another thing worth noting too, every 17 Handles store plants, 16 Handles, sorry, plants 16 trees every, every week of their existence. I think that's a, that's a nice-
That's a great, great gift to the community.
Will they plant some here now that?
No, I think they probably do it in some-
Came over Saturday for the Climate Action activities here.
Amazed, were you properly amazed?
I was.
Good amazed.
But it was interesting, a number of, you know, booths to talk to people, and they were, had some lectures on greening your home, and, you know, I think if people go on the website, they can find out more about the opportunities to get your home checked for heat loss and things like that, that you might want to-
And there were, there were lots of sports items being exchanged, I observed.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other announcements?
Just one more.
One more.
Remind everybody that the Rotary Chocolate Extravaganza is this Sunday. Buy your tickets online first, and you'll save over the, at the door price.
And it will be over before?
Before the Super Bowl, yes.
Whoever's in the Super Bowl. We don't know who's in the Super Bowl. Or we don't care. All right. Any other announcements, members of the board? Then I will move to the miscellaneous calendar, the minutes from January 22nd, we have additions or amendments?
I did make some corrections, which I've given to Kate already.
Okay, all right. Any others? Then I move approval of the minutes from January 22nd, as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley, Selectman Binka, Selectman Goldstein, Chair votes aye. And the next item is a new set of fees. So, let's see. So, if you would explain-
Happy to.
About the fees.
Andy Martino, Economic Development Planner for the town. I'll start by saying that both of our preservation staff apologize for not being able to be here tonight. Both Greer Hardwick and Jean are out for health reasons, so we wish them a speedy recovery. So they asked me to step in and explain briefly the rationale for the increase in fees for both preservation and for demolition. Both set of fees have been in place since 1990. They're proposing an increase for a certificate of non-applicability and also for a certificate of appropriateness. The fee increase would move from $15 to $20 for non-applicability, and from $35 to $50 for certificate of appropriateness. So that's work that homeowners are seeking to do on their historic home, and it's just a review process by the preservation folks to make sure it meets the character of the home and the neighborhood. And also, you know, they're proposing an increase in the fee for retroactive certificates of appropriateness from $105 to $150. The Preservation Commission feels the nominal increase in these fees is appropriate, given the time that it's been since the last adjustment, and then also to continue to encourage homeowners to repair and maintain their historic structures. They don't want it to be a financial burden for folks seeking to do those things.
Okay, questions for Mr. Martino? Yes, Selectman Binka?
Just, just to put that in perspective, the $50 fee for the certificate of appropriateness covers work up to an amount of $25,000. So as a percent of the value of the work, it's really a relatively small amount.
Yeah, that's, it's actually, for the certificate of appropriateness, there's a sliding scale of $2 per $1,000 of work in excess of $17,500. The proposed increase would be same sliding scale, $2 per $1,000 of work, but it would be in excess of $25,000, as Selectman Binka just said. So, again, a nominal fee increase for preservation work. On the demolition side, they're proposing much more dramatic increases in fees for certificates of nonsignificance and certificates of architectural or historic significance for demolition. Currently, the fee for nonsignificance is $20, and the fee for a building that's found to be historic or architecturally significant is $100. They're proposing an increase of $80 for nonsignificance, so it would move to $100, and a fee increase of $200 for historical significance, so it would go from $100 to $300. The reason for the dramatic increase is that the Preservation Commission feels, again, it's been a while since the fees have been adjusted, and also the process for demolition is much more labor intensive, and so they feel that the fees reflect the amount of work that's involved, especially when you have a structure that's deemed to be historically or architecturally significant. The process for demolition delay can be anywhere from 12 to 18 months, which can include public hearings, design review, subcommittee work, and so that's, that's the rationale for the increase. And also, quite frankly, to discourage folks from wanting to demolish their historical homes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Martino? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just want to say, while I appreciate that last reason, I, I won't be voting for it for that reason, because I don't think that's a valid reason for fees legally. So I will be voting for it because I think it has been too low, and the staff does a lot of work, so the amount of effort that goes into it will be commensurate with the increased fee.
Right, and there will be value for that fee, I think is a fair way.
I think we all agree on that reason.
Okay. Then I will move that we approve increasing fees for preservation and demolition review applications, and I'm going to not read them out, but I'm going to refer to the chart on page B2 in our packet. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Martino. Chief Ford, you have a grant.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening.
This is the SAFE grant that's awarded to us each year. Eighteen years ago, the fire service went to the state legislator and legislature and asked them to put together this program, or fund this program, student awareness in fire education. Since that time, child, annual child deaths have been reduced 70%. We receive this funding each year, and it allows for our firefighters from fire prevention mainly, and other trained instructors to go into their schools and deliver the programs. Last year, we did from K through second grade, 80 classrooms of this delivery, which we anticipate doing again this year.
Great. Well, given the rate of enrollment increases, you may have to figure out how to do more classrooms per year.
That may be on the horizon.
Yeah. Any questions for Chief Ford? Other? Oh? No, I, I have a-
I think we want to say we're pleased, but-
Yes. Selectman Daley.
Yes, very good. I appreciate that you went out and got this grant, but I wanted to say that when my son was young, they had something similar, I think it, I think it was before this kind of grant was available, but the fire department was doing something, and one time my oil burner sent like this black cloud of oily smoke through the house, and my son's babysitter immediately called 911, and the fire department came, and when they came, there was no fire, it was just this black cloud of smoke, but when they got there, my son, who was about five or six at the time, was rolling on the carpet, you know, just to, he dropped and rolled, just in case.
But we take this very seriously, and we certainly believe that helping our young people understand the appropriate actions to take in case of fire is very important. And anecdotally, I am aware of situations where a child has known more than the adult, and has known what actions to take, and has probably done as much as anybody could in the household to be sure that the family was safe in the time of a fire. So this is obviously something we all agree is a great, a great grant and a good program. So, any other comments? Then I move that we accept the Student Awareness Fire Education SAFE Grant in the amount of $7,625 to be used to educate school-aged children on fire prevention and safety. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Next item is the temporary revocable license for the Lars Anderson Carriage House. I think we're being asked to approve this, and as I understand it, it has been reviewed by town council, and I hope signed by the Transportation Museum representatives?
Yes, can I just explain a little bit?
Please.
As you know, our longer-term lease with the Transportation Museum had, had lapsed or has, has expired.
Expired.
There was some dispute about the obligations under that old lease, which the town did resolve, and until such time as we can go out for a request for proposal under, under state law, which is required to seek a longer-term permanent lease, if you will, we were required to do a temporary license agreement, which incorporated many of the terms of what we've negotiated with, with the museum. So we did get authorization to go out for a certain length under our RFP, and we will be doing that as soon as we can.
Okay, so this is a, basically covers the period up until the request for proposals process is completed, is that right?
That's the intent, although legally, it is a, it is a license agreement which is revocable at any time.
Got it, right.
But it, it also, I believe, has a provision in it that deals with the amounts that were passed due-
Right.
Prior to, isn't that?
Well, we had another agreement, I believe, for that. We had a forbearance type of an agreement. This is, this is establishing the, the ongoing temporary, you know, the interim obligations, which is $2,000 per month.
Right, my understanding is that the prior period has been, has been resolved.
And that's being paid over time.
Right, has been, yeah.
No, that, no, I take that back. No, that's right, that has been paid.
Right, right, right. The obligations have been-
My mistake.
Yeah, right. All right, then I move that we approve a temporary revocable license for the use of the Lars Anderson Carriage House by the Lars Anderson Auto Museum at 15 Newton Street. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then our next two items are temporary beverage licenses. I will move item E and F in the language in the calendar. All in favor of a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Meridian Academy for January 31st, and a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license for the Vine Ripe Grill to be held on, also on Thursday, January 31st. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we will move to the main calendar, and Mr. Martino, would you come forward again and give us an update on First Light, and tell us a little bit about our featured light, lighters, lighters? People who help light things up?
Sure. Andy Martino, Economic Development Planner for the town. I was asked to come tonight to give a report on the success of this year's First Light Festival, which was on Thursday, November 29th. By all accounts, I'm happy to report that it was a huge success. The weather was a bit chilly, but otherwise cooperative, allowing residents and visitors to come out and enjoy the festivities. None of the participating businesses reported any performer no-shows, which was great. That means folks weren't without their anticipated entertainment. In the weeks following the festival, both members of our steering committee, staff, and residents all reported that it was probably one of the better festivals in recent years, which I was pleased to hear, given this was my first go-around. And I think a lot of that success is attributed to the partnerships that we forged with different folks in the community, most notably the Sina's, who are present here tonight, and we'll hear a bit more about that shortly, the Brookline Music School and the business community. I think having featured artists like the Sina's and performances from talented musicians really helped us market the event. As I mentioned at a previous hearing, the community showed, the business community showed a strong show of financial and programmatic support for this year's festival. We had a record-setting year for fundraising, and we had over 60 businesses participate and agree to host an event. So there's a lot of support for, for the festival in town, and that's great. In terms of the Sina's, it was just fantastic, having them be our featured artists and showcase their talents here at Town Hall. If you got to see it on the canopy, you can still see it at some of the commercial businesses in town. I think it's still present over in Brookline Village at a couple of businesses, and they're just incredibly talented in what they do, in manipulating gas and tubes and light, and I'm not even exactly sure what the science is behind it, but it's just, it's just great. So we're looking forward to another good festival next year, and using that model with featured artists and partnerships, I think it really helps.
And I would just like to add that the kickoff event at Town Hall with the trees lighting up, or lighting up of the trees was well-attended, and I would hope if another year, a similar event is able to be organized, more people will come. I think the word would get out that it was something everybody enjoyed very much with the peanut butter and jelly dancers, is that right? Dance company?
The PB and J Dance Company were our opening event featured performers, and I heard that was a blast as well, so.
Right. Comments, members of the board? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just want to say I enjoyed the Sina's work around town, and I, a few days before First Light, I went to Clear Flower Bakery, which is one of my favorite places, and Abe Faber, the proprietor, happened to be there at that time, and proudly pointed out to me that he had one of them on display. So they were, they were very nice, and I think we all enjoyed seeing them. Thank you.
Selectman Goldstein?
Thanks, I'll echo that, and I got a chance to see the Sina work too. I also agree that, I thought it was the best First Light that we've had. I thought the, I went around to a few of the different venues, and there was a good crowd at every, every one of them, and people really out there, smiles on their faces, you know, exposing to the, to the merchants in the area. I really thought it was, achieved its purposes. I want to point out one other reason besides the great artwork, why I thought this year was a success, and I hope this is what we do in future years too. In years past, it's been, it's coincided with Town Meeting, and, and a lot of Town Meeting members haven't been able to go in the past. This year, they held it on a night that did not conflict with Town Meeting, and as a result, you know, a lot of community leaders were out there and-
Good observation.
Being part of it. I hope that that will, will continue. And I can't talk about First Light without mentioning Barbara Soifer, whose dream and vision this was, and every time I go to it, I, I, I'm so proud to have known Barbara.
Right, it's nice sort of to know that in Washington Square this year, I do believe that Andy participated in wrapping lights around a tree that got plugged into the little cupola that she had saved and preserved.
Yes, and I actually went to that one, it was very, very nice.
Yes, very nice, kind of honoring her memory and her legacy to us.
Right, but, and I also want to add Estelle Cates, who is a former member of this board, and for many years a Town Meeting member, and for many years a, a member of the advisory committee. Her health is failing quite rapidly at this point, but she used to be a very popular-
Attraction.
Attraction on First Light, her sort of jazz singing, and we're all missing Estelle already, as she's not able to participate in any of those sorts of events.
Selectman Binka?
Yes, just continuing with, with Estelle, we all send our best to her, and as we get into the Town Meeting season, Estelle was also the voice of Town Meeting.
We have a real, real problem, I think.
At the beginning.
Having no Estelle and no Jesse, I don't know if we're going to be allowed to-
So, we will, we will be recruiting voices, but I'm, I don't think anybody will match Estelle.
That's true.
And this actually, with all the discussion of the Sina's, sounds like a good segue to a resolution.
Yes, I think so, absolutely, and I, I was going to call them a hidden gem, but I noticed in the resolution, we're calling them a shining light. I don't know if you could be a hidden gem and a shining light, but I think probably both. So, shall we read the resolution? Andy, you want to read it?
If I could borrow a copy, I'd be happy to-
Oh, that's fine, I've got it here, I'll be glad to read it.
Sure.
Whereas Alejandro and Moira Sena, Senia, have resided and operated their business in Brookline for the past 30 years, and whereas Alejandro and Moira Senia were the featured artists for the 2012 First Light Festival, and whereas the Sina's have led the way in the use of gas, glass, and high-frequency electronics as a media for artistic expression, and whereas the Sina's are dedicated to handcrafting one-of-a-kind works of art for homes, businesses, public display, and enjoyment, and whereas the Sina's have exhibited works throughout the world, and whereas through their work and community service, they have become a shining light in Brookline. Be it therefore resolved that we, the Board of Selectment of the town of Brookline, on behalf of the citizens of Brookline, wholeheartedly applaud the Sina's contributions to the arts and for recreating a world-renowned business in our community. And I can just add thanks, I also had the pleasure of visiting their studio with an event sponsored by the Brookline Arts Center, and was able to see some of the, I guess, the workshop equipment that they use to create these works, and also probably concentrated in one place, quite an extraordinary variety of different constructions, and it was, it was delightful, it was absolutely wonderful. Great, great. Maybe they'll have an open house at their studio another time, so.
Could I ask, do the Sina's have any comments, or do you consider yourselves appropriately honored and feted? Would you like, would you like to say something?
You have to come to the-
And if-
Please come forward, though, if you want to say anything, you should speak into the microphone, otherwise, unfortunately, nobody will hear you.
I just wanted to offer you that opportunity.
Thank you very much for the recognition. We're very happy to develop our works here in Brookline, and we plan to continue doing it for as long as is possible. And also, we're very glad that you're considering starting a trend of having other artists for the years to come, to have a more artistic community development here in Brookline. So thank you very much, and I'm glad that you were in my studio and had a chance to see our works.
Yes, yes, it's magic, magical and magic.
Yes, and now we're very enthusiastic too, that we are being invited to propose some ideas for the teen center.
Ah, wonderful.
So I hope-
We look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, we will have our glow there too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just would like to say to you that this resolution is something that we will have framed, and you will receive it, but not tonight, because we have to put it together and everything. So, but you'll get it, you will get it in a, in a frame.
Oh, that was nice.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your contributions to the community and, and to the arts.
Yes, and I also want to thank my wife, Maura, that we work together.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you both. Thank you for being a partnership that we, I would say, it's one of the things that we highly value in Brookline. We love partnerships of all kinds, and I know that you two have worked together to not just create, but to take your works and have them installed in museums. We, we are very, very happy to have you around as an example for other people.
Thank you very much, and we'll keep having our works, developing, and coming with new ideas.
Great. Look forward to seeing them and to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We actually have to vote.
Yes, 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 all right. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now we will go back to a more business-flavored item, our budget objectives for fiscal 14, as amended.
Good evening. What you have in front of you is what I hope will be your final listing of budget objectives for FY14. I got it last minute, edited number seven, so I'm hoping that that is it.
Comments from members of the board?
Very happy with these.
Selectman Goldstein, thank you for your expanded item number seven, which I will say out loud, originally talked about diversion, diversity and inclusion in the community, and has now had a phrase added to say, "In our residential community, in the staffing of town departments, through such efforts as participation in the Commonwealth Compact."
I'm very happy with this, with this list, and it's a daunting challenge.
Yes, right, right. Well, there are objectives that we all aspire to, how's that? And we'll do our best to accomplish them. Okay, any comments from members of the board before we vote? Then I move that we approve the fiscal 14 budget objectives. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
And then we shall have some more discussion about the Norfolk County-
Budget update.
Whoops, sorry, state budget update.
I'm going to start, I'm going to start that and ask Sean to also fill in.
Will he join us?
So I will just do it from here, if you don't-
So, I will just do it from here, if you don't mind. So, you received in your packet, two memos from Sean and also an article that talked about the review of the state budget at the MMA meeting, which was held last weekend. I want to say first that, you know, I've seen a lot of state budget reviews and they're very complicated. The state budget is very complicated and we get them from a lot of very qualified budget analysts, but I have to say that Sean knows the state budget just about as good as anyone that I've, I've encountered and he does a really great job at synthesizing it and trying to communicate it in a easily-to-understand way. So I want to recognize Sean's efforts each year because the state budget is very important to understand, not only for the state aid that it provides to the, to the town, but also some of the reforms and other components of the budget that impact municipal government. So I want to say that about Sean first. And then just to give you some highlights, as you know, the governor did submit his budget last week, I believe on Wednesday. It's called House One and it is the initial budget proposal of the state government. And then on Friday, we attended the MMA annual meeting, which is the gathering of mayors, selectmen, town managers, and others, municipal officials. And we heard from the governor directly and other, other people speaking about the budget. So we really were immersed in, in analyzing the budget over the last few days. But the governor's budget is proposed to be $36.5 billion next fiscal year, which increases spending by about $2.3 billion or 7%. So you can tell right off the bat that that number is very aggressive and ambitious. The governor's budget, and you'll, we heard this a number of times, you'll continue to hear it, was a theme of education, innovation, and infrastructure. And it is intended to be investments, additional investments in those three areas through new revenue, which as I think you all know, is being proposed as a general tax increase, overall net tax increase, creating $1.2 billion in new revenue that would fund the fiscal 14 budget, the state budget. Because one of those areas of education is, is something that Brookline provides, along with the other 350 cities and towns, much of the money that was, much of this investment was allocated in Chapter 70, education aid. And because of that additional aid and also because of the way that the governor's accelerating a reform proposal that tends to benefit Brookline, his budget would increase Chapter 70 education aid to our town by the sum of $2.8 million or 31%. So obviously, that would be wonderful news for the town, but I'll talk about that in just a bit. He also proposed a new general government aid allocation, which would benefit the town by $121,000. But for the reason I mentioned, that this is a very aggressive budget proposal that is dependent on such a large tax increase, we are very reluctant to propose in our, in our budget that we're going to be, our town budget that we're going to be presenting in a couple of weeks to incorporate all, all of that aid, state aid. And because, as you know, this is going to be a very political decision to increase general taxes in that manner, I think we were all prepared to some extent for a, some sort of a tax discussion and resolution on transportation funding, which as you know, began last year. We had a lot of, we participated in our own forum about the MBTA, but this goes beyond that. And as a result, we, we believe that it's unlikely that the, the full impact of the governor's proposal could, could be realized. And so we feel to be prudent, it would, it would be appropriate for us not to count on all of the revenue that would come to Brookline from the governor's budget. And specifically, we are going to be proposing that instead of the $2.8 million increase in Chapter 70 education aid, that we will get $1.75 million additional. So not quite, about halfway there, but nonetheless, it's, it's a very significant increase for the town, which will come in handy given our pressures on our enrollment at the elementary and other levels of our, of our system. We do not propose that we count on any of that $121,000 of the additional general government aid. We think it's very speculative and we just think it's prudent not, not to recommend that. So bottom line is, it's still a, a strong budget for Brookline, but we don't anticipate that it will be as strong as the governor proposes. And so I wanted to mention as a result of that, you know, we have had a, when we received the news about fiscal 13 and some cutbacks from fiscal 13, I did announce that we would be imposing a more judicious review of vacancies. We will continue to do, to, to bring vacancies to your level, but I did want you to know that I will probably be submitting a proposal to fill some vacancies in the fire department in the near future. I just, I want to, I want to let you know about that. The other big part of the governor's budget is reforms and I have to say, this governor has been very aggressive in pursuing reforms that have benefited local government and he continues to do that this year. In particular, although not directly related to his House One budget proposal, he has announced a ambitious reform of retiree, municipal retiree health insurance. State retirees as well, right Sean? That would really impact our OPEB liability, all of government OPEB liability. So, and I wanted to ask Sean to speak on that particular because he, Sean has taken this on and although he wasn't an official member of the statewide task force that the governor assembled, he was actively involved in that and I think had a lot to do with the outcome, which was very favorable. And the governor will be submitting that legislation and I wanted to have, given the importance of OPEB and our liability to the town, I wanted Sean to specifically talk about that reform.
I think a lot of the credit should go to the MMA rep who was on it, the town manager Schuessberry, Dan Mogado did a fantastic job representing the 351 cities and towns. So the commission was a, I think it was a either 11 or 12 member commission, representative of labor management, two Republicans on it, two Democrats on it, Dolores Mitchell from the GIC, representative of A&amp;F, a few others that were on it. And they published their recommendations a few weeks ago and there was an awful lot, as you can imagine, back and forth, give and take, that I, you know, got to see some of firsthand. They're all public meetings, which, you know, they posted minutes and had, you know, they, it was actually neat to watch at, at the state level them following the open meeting law, which might pry your life there, I didn't really see. So, as Mel said, it is, you know, a very aggressive step by government standards. I think some folks who you might read or have read already say this doesn't go far enough, are comparing this more to the private sector and if you do that, absolutely, it's still, I don't want to say night and day, but there still is a big difference between what would, what retirees would get in the public sector versus the private sector. But if you look at where we're at now to where this would go if, if approved, it is pretty significant. And I'll just run through briefly the primary recommendations. So right now, state or municipal employee, you retire with 10 years of service at age 55, your pension's going to be basically nothing, but you'll have life, health insurance until you pass away. And actually, if you do and you have a spouse, then your spouse keeps it. So it's a very generous benefit for only 10 years of service, which obviously far out strips the pension that you would get in that, that situation. So that's the current scenario or current law. What they're recommending is that there be, you know, speak to group one employees, which are everybody primarily except police and fire. For police and fire, this would, this would kick in as well, but everything I'm saying, back off five years, and what I mean by that is, I'm going to say 60 years old, for myself, Mel and, you know, other group one employees. For police and fire, it would be 50 years old. So there is a, there's, in the pension system, police and fire can start at 40, can retire at 45 years old. For group one, it's 55 years old. So there's a 10-year difference between the two. So when I say 60 years old, I'm, again, just talking about group one for group four, which is important for, not so much at the state level, because they don't have much group four. Local level, you know, the big three is police, fire, and DPW. So two-thirds of that are group four employees, so it really is a big part of municipal government. So, so they're at 50, wouldn't be at 60. So talking about group one, you have to retire at 60 years old in order to be eligible. And you have to have 20 years of service. So the way that you, that you'll hear this discussed is going from 55 with 10, all the way to 60 with 20. So you're doubling the years of service and you're having a minimum of 60 years. Also, they'll do something which, you know, been talking about for a few years now, is prorating contribution rates based upon your years of service. And there's a term that they used called maximum available benefit. If you look at the report, the acronym is MAB. And what that means is, take Brookline for an example. If I were retired, well, I'm a bad example, I'm not eligible. If somebody were retired tomorrow, they would get an 83% contribution rate by the Town of Brookline. At the state, it's an 80-20 split. Brookline, we're 83-17. So that 83 is the MAB, the maximum available benefit. So if you retire at 60 with 20 years of service, you get, you would get 50% of the MAB or 50% of the premium, whichever's greater. And in all cases, it's going to be 50% of the premium, because that's the minimum under state law. Now, that's something as an aside, personally, I think should be looked at a little bit more, why a minimum of 50, but the commission didn't look at that. So the minimum you would get, 20 years of service, 60 years of age, would be 50% of the premium covered, okay? So that's the easy part, then it starts to get a little bit more complicated. If you work for 23 to 26 years of service, you would get 50% plus one-third of the difference between that MAB and 50%. So use Brookline as an example. 83 minus 50 is 33, times a third is 11. You add that to 50, you get 61. So if this were to become law in Brookline, if this were to become law at the state level in Brookline, a retiree, if they worked 23 years at 60 years old, they would get 61% of the premium covered, as opposed to the person who works to the maximum, which would be 83%. So you see how this proration would impact, which is exactly what it's designed for. The pension system, if you think it is fair and equitable, rewards longevity, age and years of service. The longer you work, the older you get, you, you get closer to that 80% maximum. So this is the same construct. So 20 years is the 50% minimum, 23 to 26 is that one-third plus 50%, one-third of that MAB. And again, you gotta, you can't say that that would be the same for everybody, because some communities are 60, 40, 50, 50, 75, 25, we're 83-17. The next bucket would be 27 to 29. You'd get two-thirds of the difference. So it would be 83 minus 50 times two-thirds plus 50 gets you 72%. So again, if you're an employee, you retire at 60, you worked 27 years, instead of getting the full 83%, you would get 72%. Then at 30 years of service, you as an employee would get 100% of whatever your community's offering. So if you're a 50, 50 community, you, you get 50%. If you're an 83-17 or a 90-10, you get 100% of that maximum benefit. So the real construct there is reward longevity, just like pension. No more 10 years of service, you get the same benefit as the employee who's been working at the town for 37 years. You know, this puts it in, you know, equity was a big part of, of this proposed reform. So first big thing was 60 years with 20 years of service. Second big proposal was proration based upon years of service. Then they spent a fair amount of time, understandably, who would this impact? The whole grandfather in question. Because it's very different with pensions. With pensions, it, it impacted no existing employees. It had to impact only new employees or future employees. This was different. They actually had to have a conversation about who would be grandfathered and obviously it was a very sensitive situation for a lot of the primarily union representatives, retiree representatives on the commission. So what they proposed was the following. Obviously, anybody's already retired, this, this impacts them. If you are five years, within five years of retirement age, which again, for us, would be under this proposal, 55 years, because it would be 60, within five years, it'd be 55. With 20 years of service, you're okay. You would be grandfathered. The second one would be, and this was something certainly that I had learned, I didn't know much about retirement plus, which is a teacher incentive, retirement incentive, where you pay more into the system and you get to retire early. So there were some concerns by the teachers associations about those who had already contributed more to retire earlier and they would, they might not have become eligible for health insurance because their threshold was 60. So what the committee recommended was, if you're on retirement plus and you reach your full pension, which is 80%, and you're at least 57, then you would be grandfathered. So that was the second primary exemption. And then the, the last one would be, if you're 60 years of age with at least nine years of service, you'd be covered. And the rationale for that was, you know, there might be some 59-year-old employees who had started nine years ago, who, you know, are within one year of getting the benefit. It's a very small pool based upon the numbers at the commission guard, but, you know, there was, I think the term was used, at, at every point, you talk about there's going to be a cliff and somebody's going to be impacted by that cliff, so where do you stop? So that was where, those are the three grandfathered areas. So still, the majority of employees would be covered, you know, I'd be covered, because I don't have, you know, I'm not, within five years of retirement, I, I actually do have, no, I don't have 20 years of service yet. So the vast majority of employees would be, current employees would be covered under this. Then there were some partial exemptions, I think Mel likes these ones. 50 years of age with 15 years of service, you're partially exempted. And 55 with 10 years of service, you're partially exempted. And what that means is you could retire then, but it would only be at 50% premium coverage. So again, it was that, you know, people might have started it in their, you know, late 30s, early 40s, and how do we avoid, you know, making them work for a far longer period than they would have otherwise? So that's what the commission recommended for grandfathering. So with all that aside, I think the majority of employees would be impacted by this, which is obviously a huge part of the equation of how much money would this save the state and communities. Two other things. And this was the primary reason that the MMA was the lone dissenting vote. I think it was 10 or 11 to 1 and MMA voted against it, the representative from MMA. A lot of back and forth, give and take, and it was one point where the MMA put a line in the sand and said, "We're not doing it." And it was this, the commission recommended that current retiree contribution rates are held harmless, or frozen, I should say, for three years. And that's really important because local boards of selectmen actually have the ability to change retirees' contribution rates. So Board of Selectmen, and this just happened Winchester, and they literally held up the local newspaper from Winchester and said, "See, this is happening right now." Winchester took a vote to go from wherever they were at, down to 50-50, effective, I think it was January 1, it might have been July 1. So what the commission members wanted to do was, you know, basically take a three-year breather on this, don't allow communities to what they were calling rush to the bottom of the 50-50 and, and take a breather on it. And then, once that three-year hiatus is over, if you make a change to retirees, you can never make a change again. And it was the combination of those two things that MMA said, you know, we just, we can't agree to that. We've compromised on a whole number of areas. I think they were actually at 65 years old to start and they said, "That's it, we can't really move forward with that." So that was a big, big sticking point. You know, just an example of another area where MMA actually agreed with a, originally, I don't think wanted to. Believe it or not, there are about, I think we told, 40 or 50 communities that do not contribute to a surviving spouse's premium share. So in Brookline, surviving spouse gets 83-17. The majority of the communities, it goes down to 50-50. But in 30, 40 communities, it's zero. So the, so the surviving spouse would actually pay 100% of the premium. So what primarily the mass retiree representative wanted was a mandated minimum 50% contribution rate for all cities and towns. So again, it would impact 30 or 40. MMA actually went along with it. There's some concern about unfunded mandate violations there, so there's got to be some work around of how to deal with that. But that's another example of, of a compromise throughout all of this. The other thing I wanted to say, which was important to us, again, because of the large number of police firefighters that municipalities have, is that any accidental disability retirements are held harmless from this. So if you're a police officer or firefighter and you get injured on the job at 40 years old and you've only been on for 10, you get the full, whatever your community's offering. So basically, a whole harmless provision for that. And ordinary disability retirement, which is not injured on the job, there was some discussion about that. about that, and they ended up basically saying that you could get the fifty percent minimum. And then after twenty years of service, there'd be some proration. But that's a, there's not as much as that as there are ADRs. And then the part-time employee issue, which is something we've talked about here locally with our retirement board. What the commission wants to do, and I'm really interested to see what the legislation says, because the report recommended it, as opposed to saying it should be mandated. Right now, there's a hundred and five, I think, local retirement boards, and each retirement board does their business differently. What the state does is, they say, if you work ten years at part-time, so say you work fifty percent of a full-time employee, you get a half a year of credible service for that first year. In Brookline, in other communities, you get one year credible service. So the state, in order to get the ten-year vesting, you've got to work twenty years as a part-time employee. In Brookline and in others, it's ten years, whether you work an eighteen-point-seven-five hours a week, which is the minimum, or twenty, or thirty, or thirty-seven and a half, which is, you know, unfair. So what the commission recommends is that local retirement boards adopt that same procedure as the state. And we'll see if it becomes mandated within, because that is a big, you know, a big part of this. You have some employees, primarily because of the way it's structured, in the school side, where you have, like, aides as a great example, who don't work full-time, they're not in the state retirement, I mean, the teachers' retirement system, they're in our retirement system. They vest with ten years of part-time service, and then they're eligible for health insurance as well. So that's going to be another issue that's going to have to play itself out. So in summary, they estimate twenty billion dollars of savings for state and local governments over a twenty-year period. There will be little, if any, immediate savings from this, obviously, because you're talking about a future expense. There will be, you know, further discussion, I believe, once the bill's filed, even though it was in a, it was a vast majority vote, only one dissension, Republicans and Democrats on the committee agreed to it. But groups like the mass taxpayers have already come out saying, "Yeah, this is a good first step, but, you know, it's not far enough." MMA has the issue, primary issue that I mentioned. So I believe the bill's supposed to be filed within the next couple of weeks, and then we'll see how it goes forward from there. You know, there'll be the public hearing for the bill, MMA knows going to play a role in making their case. The only thing, the only other thing I want to say is that, and this is something I'm going to hopefully try to work with MMA on, is totally understand there, they're not wanting to go forward with basically taking away a right that a local board of selectmen have. But if you look across and, you know, take Brookline as a good example, there's never been a discussion about harming existing retirees by saying, "Well, we're going to bring you all the way down to fifty-fifty," you know, effective, you know, pick the date. You know, Winchester's an anomaly, I think, that actually did that. I don't think you have many cities with a mayor who's up for reelection, looking to reduce current retirees' contribution, or increase current retiree contribution rates. So one of the things I want to see if it's possible, is that, through all the give and take of the legislative process, if there's the ability to let local boards of selectmen grandfather, not mandate, but have it as basically a local option. So if you said, "Okay, we need to do something to further reduce our OPEB liability, let's, for example, say, all existing, I mean, all new retirees, as of, pick the date, July first, two thousand fourteen, they will be at fifty-fifty or sixty-forty, pick the percentage, but we're leaving existing retirees alone." I think there would be a little bit more support for something like that, there'd be less pain caused to some retirees whose pensions might be twenty thousand dollars or less. So while I totally understand MMA's opposition to giving up a right that you have as a board of selectmen, but I think there might be some other options within there. But all in all, it's a, you know, again, if you step back, and if you had said that, a group, a pretty diverse group of folks would come to almost nearly complete agreement on a pretty significant public policy change, I think many people would have said no. But it's before, it's going to be before the legislature. And as a rule of thumb, from what I heard, from the, they actually hired dual actuaries on this commission, one to do state and one to do a sampling of municipalities. Ballpark of like fifteen percent savings off of your OPEB liability could be expected. So when we have the next OPEB actuary, which the current one will be presented to you within a few weeks, by the way, two years from now when the next one's done, if this were to become law, we should expect to see another relatively significant reduction[910.51] in that liability, so.
Interesting. What about Medicare eligibility?
In terms of?
Well, I believe we have employees now who are contributing to Medicare and so there must be other communities like that.
Well, every employee who was hired after, I think it was March of eighty-seven, has to contribute, so they're in the system already. It was either the, I think it was the Municipal Health Reform, Municipal Health Reform Act a year ago mandated every community to put eligible retirees into Medicare, because there were communities that didn't do that.
Right.
So there's nothing really inherent about, you know, any changes to, to that. What some folks were concerned about was if the federal government does move eligibility to sixty-seven, that then that would actually worsen the OPEB problem, because as we all know, one of the biggest drivers of OPEB liability is retiring prior to sixty-five, so it's that gap when you're, when you're not on a Medicare plan. So if it went to sixty-seven and you had these reforms that said sixty is the age, some folks actually wanted it to be Medicare minus five.
Right.
But others said, no, we shouldn't be doing that. So that, to the extent that Medicare was discussed, that was the only time I heard it really discussed.
Okay. Questions, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, well, this is, you know, certainly a step in the right direction, I'm glad to see it. The, giving somebody only a half year of credited service if they work half-time was something that my OPEB committee actually recommended that we try to do in Brookline. So are, did, did I hear you say, though, that under this plan you have to retire at sixty?
Well, it's a great question because
Doesn't that increase our liability?
Because we, we went through this with the department heads, Mel's department head meeting last week, and I went through this just like I did with you, and one of the department heads asked that exact question, and I sent an email to the MMA rep on it and the MMA staff person, I got two different answers. Not surprisingly, because, you know, the question is, do you have to retire into the benefit? Meaning if, the word eligibility means you have to retire at sixty to become eligible? Or does it mean you can retire at fifty-seven, sit in the sidelines for three years, is you got your minimum twenty years of service, but you're not sixty, you wait three years and then come back? So that's a great question, that's going to have to be ironed out in the legislation.
Good. I'm glad, I'm glad somebody's going to fix it.
But I, I have one other question, too. Say someone like you who's worked for the town a long time, but maybe doesn't have the twenty years in, and you're hired tomorrow to become the town manager over in Cambridge or something like that.
And be an increase in pay? No.
Okay, I'm going to give you a bonus there. So, but what, what happens in that situation? Can you, is there any provision for somebody that stays within municipal government but not in the same?
Yeah, so it, just like pensions, you can go, you know, you could work in twenty communities over a forty-year period, as long, because it's one system, one set of rules for pensions, health insurance, the same thing, so it's your last employer. So if you're at a community like Brookline where it's eighty-three-seventeen, and then for the last year of work, you go to a community X and they're fifty-fifty, then that's where you retire, that's what you're talking about, so you would get fifty percent. So it's, it's X number of years, and it's at least twenty in the system.
Right, but do, do the different communities retire, I mean, is your OPEB thing apportioned by those different communities that you've worked for?
The answer to that is, it's supposed to be yes. There was a new state provision out of the year or two, two or three years ago. That said, municipalities, just like you can for pensions, you can send a bill to a community. So to pick on Mel a little bit, if he were to retire tomorrow, for pension purposes, would send a bill to Belmont, Winchester, and Wilberham?
In Arlington.
In Arlington. So, so those four communities.
Some people just can't hold a job, can they?
So those four communities would actually pay their prorated share of Mel's pension, so that money goes back into the pension fund. So they, they enacted a similar provision for health insurance, but the association of town council, I think, was said that that's really not enforceable. So part of this proposal is actually to make it enforceable and actually allow us municipalities to bill the state. So for my, you know, I've got three years of service at the state, so if, you know, twenty years from now when I'm able, eligible to retire, you know, three whatever percentages of that time could be built back to the state, and vice versa, the state could build municipalities. So in here is a, is a recommendation to make that provision enforceable. And obviously, it makes a whole lot of sense, because if you're at an employer for two years and you had twenty-eight years somewhere else, that last community shouldn't be footing your, your health insurance.
Right, so the accounting for this, though, strikes me as being not just very complicated, but it will, would require that communities have maintained very detailed and accurate records. Are we talking about something that would be like a cherry sheet adjustment for all of the eligible persons?
No, it's already in place now with pensions. So yes, there have to be good records in place, but what I think would have to happen with something like this, or when it hopefully becomes laws, there's going to have to be a lot more integration with retirement systems and municipal payroll systems or benefit databases, so that we, so that it's, there's a lot more close, closely working relationships with the time. Not that we don't have it here, but there might be other places that don't. But if they're already billing four or five communities for pension purposes, then we should be able to do the same thing for health insurance purposes.
Okay, Selectman Binka?
It, it, obviously, though, will get complicated if different communities, or because different communities have different contribution rates for retirees.
Yep, exactly.
I mean, it's not just, how many years did you work, but what is your?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's going to be complicated to calculate this.
Did, during, during this process, was there any discussion of the idea of grandfathering or phasing in the, you know, what you suggested as a further issue to pursue, the contribution rate issue going forward?
No, the, it was the, it was pretty clear that the representative from Mass Retirees and the representative from the AFL-CIO were pretty adamant that, you know, they wanted some protection for retirees. And, you know, timing in life, timing's everything in life, I've heard a few times. They literally had the Winchester story and said, look, you know, this is what we're worried about. So that really drove them to say, we just need, we need a pause, you know, we're going to freeze everything, and then you can never go back. MMA certainly pushed back and said, no, we don't, we don't want that, but there was never really any discussion about kind of a hybrid, because they, they're very adamant about this is what they wanted. But I think, I'm hoping that there's some openness to some other options during the legislative review.
Because certainly the model of this entire process is a compromise, phasing in, holding harmless those who are either retired or the closest to retirement, and then making the changes down the road, and, and that would be certainly consistent with that.
Yep, and, and if you heard the discussions, I mean, they were extremely polite, you know, there was never any animosity at the table, no matter, even though you knew they were on different sides, they were always very polite, very professional. But it was pretty clear that there were certain lines in the sand that were being drawn. And, you know, the, the unions and retiree reps can say with a straight face, they, they did it publicly, that, you know, they had to, they were getting beaten up in front of their members for saying, we're going to have to double your years of service, and you're going to have to work until you're sixty, which were things that weren't well-received by their membership. So, you know, they, you know, they, they were getting a lot of kudos for coming back to the table and actually going forward with something like this. And proration was something that was never, you know, something a lot of people don't like, because, you know, as it is now, you start at forty, you work, you know, maybe fifteen years, you get the same benefit as the, you know, DPW employee who's been working for thirty-seven years. So there was a lot of give and take, and I assume there's going to be some more. But I think the fact that everybody but one representative voted for it means that there's a very strong likelihood that something very similar to this is going to get passed.
Part, part of what happened, it seems to me, though, is, and, and a persuasive, to many people at least, perhaps, argument, is that it has really significantly made it fairer. So there are not some people who make out like bandits and others who work much longer and who do not get a proportionate differential to benefit the, or to reflect the longer years of service. And it seems to me, and, and I know it was probably a very challenging task to be able to come up with a set of standards that both would be fair and also addressed all the other, and to me, the most amazing thing about this is all of the differences in the systems, whereas one municipality does, does things one way, and there's three hundred and fifty-one of them out there. I just hope that when the legislature gets it, it does not turn into sausage and come out very differently from the commission's recommendation.
If you read, I would just say to that point, if you read the first four or five pages of the report, which is very well-written, they talk a lot about equity fairness, you know, maintaining this as a attractive part of the job to become a, you know, public employee, where you're not going to get filthy rich being a public employee. So there was a lot of that in there. And A and F, the representative from A and F was over and over and over again talking about long-term sustainability. You know, one of the graphs that's in the final report is what their model is for long-term sustainability for the state, and how does this reform help them or not help them stay within that. So, you know, there were a lot of competing interests up front, but again, if you read the first few pages, you'll see how, how they kind of took all these priorities up front and then ended up having the recommendations for the most part meet those.
Selectman Goldstein?
Thanks. You, you've made reference on several times to our contribution rate eighty-three-seventeen, you mentioned that the state's eighty-twenty, and every other example you gave, it was south of there, fifty-fifty. When we last negotiated, I felt like we, we weren't in such a rarefied place and that there were other communities with, with similar contribution rates to our own. Are we, is our eighty-three-seventeen a, a, a real exception?
There are some ninety-ten's.
Yep.
What I've been told, and I'm waiting to see as part of all this next phase, I'm waiting to get some data to see what every community looks like, but eighty-three-seventeen's at the high end.
I would say that, you know, to, in order to get into the GIC, which saved the town a lot of money, there were negotiations, and this was before the reform that made it a little easier and less costly, I, I would say, to do that. But of course, we got the benefit of a couple more years of savings and others. So remember that those contribution rates that Sean mentions, there, most of those are probably not in the GIC, they're probably in richer plans than the GIC.
Yep.
Was there ever a discussion about standardizing the contribution rate from certain communities? Is that something that will always apparently be left?
This is New England, we love our little kind of
Well, plus it's part of collective bargaining.
Yeah, yep.
Well, I'm curious, actually, I guess I'll ask Mr. Kletner, and you can certainly chime in, but were there discussions at the MMA meeting about some of the governor's proposals? Did you get a sense that the governor's proposals were going to be popular, or there would be a lot of resistance? Do you have any sort of feedback from other communities?
Sure, I, I think everybody that I talked to felt that it was quite a reach for, for to expect the governor's proposal to be enacted into law. I don't think there was any, necessarily any judgments made about his, the merits of his proposals, but just sort of more practical, political evaluation, I think most are sort of in our boat. They felt that, wow, that sounds great news, but we're not going to count on it to the extent that, that we would otherwise. You know, in the last couple of years, I think the governor's budget was viewed as the budget, and that the legislature wasn't going to really modify it a whole lot. That's certainly not the, the feeling this for, for next year's budget.
Okay, all right. Selectman Binka?
Yeah, Sean, just following up on Ken's question about standardizing the contribution rate, if I understood you correctly, the proration of contribution based on years of service is going to flatten this for, I mean, this, that will affect us, for example, that if somebody, even though we've got now negotiated an eighty-three percent contribution rate, if somebody only has twenty years of service, under this, they would only get fifty percent.
Well, it would be fifty as the minimum, and then I think the next, where it was twenty-three, what did I say?
Twenty-three to twenty-six.
Twenty-seven would be sixty-one percent.
Yeah, so, so even though our negotiated rate, or the rate that's in place now is eighty-three percent, somebody would have to get to thirty years of service in order to get that.
Thirty years of service, sixty years old.
Despite what our collective bargaining agreements say, right? Is that, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, because again
Yeah, that's, I mean, that was, that was my
Yeah, the key, the key term that they're using is that maximum available benefit, which is basically defined as your community's, a hundred percent of your community's premium share. So if you're fifty-fifty, or it's fifty, if you're seventy-five, twenty-five, it's seventy-five percent, if you're eighty-three-seventeen, it's eighty-three percent.
The, the retiree health insurance is not bargained in most cases, I see. And that's why the Winchester selectmen could have done what they did. In our case, because we are in the GIC and we had to adopt that so-called coalition bargaining, it, it is tied with our collective bargain, but apparently this legislation will have some language that will make it, will trump that, I assume, right, Sean?
The retirees were at the table when we went into the GIC.
They must be, they're, they're part of the
Yes, yes, absolutely.
The statutory scheme.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so I gather that the financial plan, when released, will be conservative in its estimates with regard to the governor's proposed budget, but will otherwise, I'm assuming, at least take advantage of some of the sort of information that we now have that will help us at least be more confident about some of our projections, right? And very uncertain about others.
Yeah, if I can just add one thing to Mel's overview of the budget, the one thing that's concerning, at least to me, is, I mean, we love the fact that they fully implemented that so-called aggregate wealth model, which basically says, every community, every school district's foundation budget has to be funded at a minimum of seventeen percent by the state, meaning Chapter Seventy has to pay for seventeen and a half percent of your foundation budget. For Brookline, a few years ago, we were at twelve, then we got up to fourteen, using round numbers. This year, we're at sixteen. They fully implemented it for every, I think there were fifty or sixty communities who were below that seventeen and a half percent threshold, and brought them all the way up to seventeen and a half. And I think you can guess the demographics of the communities that were below seventeen and a half. It's all the, you know, more wealthy communities that benefited greatly. So if you take a sort of the increase from fourteen and thirteen, you're going to find Lexington, Weston, Dover, Brookline, a whole host of other communities that people in other districts are going to say, well, wait a minute, how come they're getting fifty percent, or in our case, a thirty percent increase in Chapter Seventy funding, when we're getting twenty-five bucks per pupil, which is the minimum funding? So that, to me, was the biggest concern. And then how do they actually fund that without any, if the tax increases don't go through?
Right, right.
That was the, and you'll see that in the presentation.
Well, but, but fortunately, as we prepare our financial plan, all of these variables will be taken into account.
I, I think the takeaway is that this budget will be a good one for state aid, will be good for Brookline, and will be greater than what we initially estimated a couple of months ago. So, you know, I, even though it's not as strong as, as we were hoping, but it is, it is a strong budget for us, and I think we'll just try to take advantage of it.
If it passes.
I was going to say, the, the big question mark in my mind is what will happen at the legislature, and I guess even a sort of a footnote to that is, will they actually pass it before September? In which case, we will have to wait until we know for sure. Well, thank you both, this has been education illuminating, and we will continue to stay tuned, because clearly there's going to be more information being developed as the legislature takes this up. Moving on, I guess we're going to have a little update on the suggestion that we adopt a resolution with regard to Norfolk County. Mr. Kletner, you want to bring us up to date on that?
Sure, as, as I recall your vote last week, you had, in concept, agreed to adopt a resolution that
A, a resolution, not the resolution.
A resolution, a resolution that, that talked about our withdrawal and the reasons therefore from, from our interest in withdrawing from Norfolk County, and also agreed in principle to send some sort of a communication to other municipalities within Norfolk County that explained our resolution and encouraged them to adopt a similar resolution. And I think that's appropriate, because in fact, our town meeting did instruct the selectmen to, to file a bill that would allow us to withdraw from Norfolk County, in fact, we have filed that bill. So in concept, I support what the board did, but you did ask me to review the, the details of the, not only of the resolution, but the, the fact sheet that was accompanied it, that was drafted by
Volunteers.
Mr. LeBeau and Ms. Nabel and others. And so we've been working on that, and it's been a tall task, and are not quite ready yet to, to submit a final proposal. But I would ask, and so we've been working mostly on the details and on the facts, and there's a lot of numbers and facts in here. I would ask the board, if you wouldn't mind, over the next week, look at some of the more subjective language in the resolution and the facts, and some of the language that I, I feel like I'm a little less able to determine whether that's the kind of message you want to send as a board to other municipalities. So I will certainly make some of my recommendations and change some of the language, but that's the area where if the board wouldn't mind taking a look at some of that language and giving me some advice, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
And, and my intent is to come back next week with a, with a draft of what we would send out.
Okay.
Could I just make a minor correction to what Mel said? We did not actually vote anything last week, we always
We, we held it and we asked
The minutes reflect that there was no vote.
Right, 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 right. We, we held, we held the item, and we did ask that the town administrator do a little research, and he, and also look at the language in the resolution and the facts. And I very much appreciate the fact that his effort has revealed that there is some, there's some inaccuracies that need to be corrected. And so what I will suggest is that we, again, hold the item, we take no action. I urge all the members to read the resolution. I will trust that our staff will give us background facts that are accurate before we actually take a position on this. And I believe very strongly, actually, when I looked at the resolution, I, there, I could, I could have cut it at least by a quarter, if not a third, so we might just want to make it shorter and more succinct, and, and that might strengthen it as well. So, any comments or questions about this at this time?
Thank you.
Seeing none, then, we move to boards and commissions, and I will, for the public, we had two, two on our calendar, we will not be voting Preservation Commission, because we have a new candidate applicant who we will be, I think, interviewing next week. So we'll hold that Preservation Commission, but we, I believe, are ready to vote the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission. And I believe we have a roster before us. And I, I think we went over the charge last time.
We did.
And I believe we, everybody voted the language, we're all, we've all agreed to the language. Would you like to do this, since it's the first time out, can we do it as a slate with designated terms of office?
Yes.
Be very clear that what we have done is establish a roster, so that there will be staggered three-year terms, that's the goal that we're trying to accomplish here. So if that's, if that was, be acceptable, then I'm going to ask the town administrator to propose a slate, but you could read the names off
Sure.
And the, and the years, the, the years of the term. And then I guess what we should have done, and I'm sorry I didn't think about this, is put the term limit. So if we're voting one year, a one-year term, that one would be one that expires in 2014.
Sure.
Is that, everybody clear about that?
Okay, and
Okay? A three-year term would be 2016.
Right. And I would just ask the chair if you want to recuse yourself on
I
Selectman alternate four.
Could, I absolutely had planned to do that.
Good, okay.
And I guess I could recuse myself from voting for all of it, because I don't see how I avoid, I avoid one if we're voting them as a slate. Well, I don't know, you want to read them off as individuals, and we can take a vote per, at each one, and that, that gets me to not voting.
I could do that.
Okay.
All right. So the, the motion then is to, is to adopt the, the membership and, and other factors as, as documented in the revised expanded Neighborhood Conservation District Commission membership dated January twenty-ninth, 2013, and the selectmen members would be as follows. For a three-year term, Dick Garver.
Aye.
For a two-year term, Deborah Goldberg.
Aye.
For a two-year term, Robin Kuchar.
Aye.
For a one-year term, Eleanor Demont.
Aye.
And then alternate memberships, for an alternate for three years, Mark Allen.
Aye.
For an alternate for a three-year term, Joyce Davis Zack.
Aye.
And for a, alternate, for a two-year term, Stephen Shmenti.
Aye.
And for a one-year, alternate one-year term, Dennis Duett.
Aye.
With the
With an abstention.
With the chair abstaining, because the last candidate happens to be a member of my family.
Same last name.
Right. Okay, I do believe that ends the business for the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, and the next time we meet, it will be February.